For our local community. From a small dent to major collision repair, Hamilton Paint and Body is here for you. Owners Brett and Kim Guin would like to say thank you for your business.
Northwest Alabama heating cooler blowing away our competition.
Hello, I'm Richard Kitchens, owner of Sports Gallery here on the Court Square in Hamilton. I'd like to thank all of our customers and thank you for watching the Hamilton City Council Meeting.
Hi, my name is Randy Whitehead, President and CEO of People's Trust Bank. I invite you to view the live streaming of Hamilton City Council meetings every first and third Monday at 6:00 PM.
Your perfect stay at the Holiday Inn in Guin off of I-22. Enjoy our amazing onsite restaurant and bar with a lunch buffet every Sunday. Relax with a quick getaway with your family and make a splash in our outdoor pool. Book your next event with us. Call us at (205) 468-4625.
I'm Rick Chambliss with Marion County Funeral Hound and Spry Memorial Chapel in Russell, Alabama. This is Glenn Cochran, our manager out here. Under the laws of Alabama that was passed in 2002, a funeral establishment has to be certified with the state and carry a certificate of authority before they can even talk to anyone when the time comes is guaranteed to be there.
Since 1987, Smith Furniture has been in business to serve the community with high-quality furniture at the best price. Some of our named brands are Home Stretch, Ashley, Lazy Boy, Catnapper, Lane, Barbassett, GE, Frigidaire, Whirlpool, and Maytag. We offer finance in 12 months, same as cash. So stop by Fulton, Mississippi and see Jim, Shannon, and Joe at Smith Furniture or call us at (662) 862-7412.
Hello, everyone. My name is Ryan Knight and I am a board member of the Hamilton Area Chamber of Commerce. I want to invite everyone to come out and join us for the annual Budahatchee River Fall Festival on Saturday, October 29th from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM. We'll start off the morning with the Kiwanis 5K race, then go directly downtown for a fun field and action-packed day. We plan to have a car show, tractor show, motorcycle ride, benefiting the nonprofit Hooper Paul, and a lineup of great entertainment from all over the area that the whole family is sure to enjoy. Be sure to join us the last Saturday in October for our annual Budahatchee River Fall Festival right here in downtown Hamilton, Alabama. If you're interested in being a vendor, please call the office at (205) 921-7786.
Owners Brett and Kim Guin would like to say thank you for your business.
Northwest Alabama heating cooler blowing away our competition.
Hello, I'm Richard Kitchens, owner of Sports Gallery here on the Court Square in Hamilton. I'd like to thank all of our customers and thank you for watching the Hamilton City Council Meeting.
Hi, my name is Randy Whitehead, President and CEO of People's Trust Bank. I invite you to view the live streaming of Hamilton City Council meetings every first and third Monday at 6:00 PM.
So we'll call it to order at this point and appreciate all that's come tonight to be with us. A couple of things we want to recognize for the month of October since this is our last month, month of the meeting for September. The Budahatchee River Fall Festival will be held in Hamilton on October the 29th. I think the booths and all will be set up on the 28th getting ready, but want us to get excited about our Fall Festival. We've added some events and some things that really haven't been happening in the festival in years past, at least for some time. So I think it's going to be a real exciting time to be in Hamilton on the 29th of October. Also, the city will be observing Columbus Day on October 10th. And of course, the city will be closed. If you have a garbage pickup on that Monday at the 10th, we're going to double up for you and catch you on Tuesday. So Monday and Tuesday, garbage will be picked up that week simultaneous. So if you're a Monday pickup on October 10th, you just set your can out there for Tuesday and we'll pick it up and be sure to get you taken care of. I wish everybody a good Columbus Day that's coming up on the 10th of October. So with that said, we'll pause now for our indication and our let's believe this and we'll get started. Heavenly Father, we approach you at this moment, Lord, just thanking you for this day of life and we thank you for the beauty of this day. Lord, we thank you that you seem fit to bestow many blessings on our city throughout this year thus far. Help us, Lord, as we work through this time of recession and great inflation that we may keep our wits and continue to be able to live in our communities and help apple suppliers to supply our needs. We thank you for our leaders of this nation and we ask you to bless each one of them as they make decisions that we hope are always correct decisions for the masters of people that live in these United States. Help us to stay united through our efforts for the cause, Lord, that we might have harmony and peace again in our nation. Many cities do not are beleaguered with much crime and much drugs and other problems. So, Lord, we ask that you bless those people and help them through these troublesome times. Let us be in your will as we meet and conduct the city's business, Christ's name, I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Lady Seaver. We'll move on into our agenda. We've got some guests that we'll hear from maybe later in the meeting, but at this point, we'd like to recommend that we approve the minutes of the September 6th, 2022 council meeting. Would you the motion?
I'd motion.
Ross made the motion, we need a second. Matt made the second. All in favor of approving our minutes? Thank you. The presentation to the Hamilton Elementary, Hamilton Middle, and Hamilton High School for their portion of the $135,000 collected from the alcohol taxes. Earlier in the school year each year, was given $200 per teacher to help with classroom expenses, leaving remaining $110,200, which will be the balance of the $135,000. This means that each of the three schools will receive $36,733.33 to make up a total of $135,000. This will probably be our last year to divide the money in this manner since we are establishing our foundation. So I'd like to recommend that we present these checks to these schools and thereafter we'll be letting them deal with the Board of Foundation for their needs. Do you understand where we're going with that?
Yes.
This will be, in our new budget, we'll budget the $300,100 per school and then we'll be drawing from that subject to Board approval, our Foundation Board approval. With that, we'd need a motion to disperse this money to the schools.
I'd motion.
We got a motion from Matt, we need a second to vote on this.
I'll say it.
Second. All in favor of dispersing the money?
Thank you.
Item 3 is a recommendation to open a new checking account at First National Bank for the sole purpose of doing payroll. This will be done to separate payroll automatic debits from other auto debits already been from the city's general fund, been taken from the city's general fund. This will allow easier audit, auditing of payroll. As we want to expel on that just a little for us.
This was a recommendation, like, from Brenda at Allen's office. She said, "We're going to learn with this doing the debit, that it's mainly going to show like a debit, not specific, and it would be much easier if we could pull payroll out of the general and have it just by itself." When we do it, she said it would be much easier to audit instead of it just being lost and all of the checks that come with it.
This comes as a recommendation from our council, kind of in code, and I think it would be a good move for us to do this. In order to do this, we need a second. Got a motion from Wade, we need a second on that.
I'll say it.
Got a second from Ross. All those in favor of opening that account so we can do our debits?
Angela, how close are we getting to the monthly problem? Getting it all ready?
It's getting pretty close.
Yeah, we've had a really good response on the employees getting us what we needed. I think there's still a few that haven't. I'll have to double check with them tomorrow, but we've got quite a few.
Item 4 is a recommendation from the city of Hamilton to give full access to online banking for ACH deposit uploads. Damian Hicks and Angela Owen. This is for authorization of performing their payroll since we're going to this automatic debit, this is going to allow them to do the functions they need to do.
They have to have this in writing from our minutes just to prove that y'all gave us permission to be able to do payroll.
That's there for all this stuff now.
That you can make. I'll make that motion.
Scott, Tyra made the motion to allow this and we need a second.
I'll say it.
Matt made the second. All in favor of giving this authorization? Thank you, I appreciate that. Item 14 is an announcement of a reappointment of Allen Cantrell to the Planning and Zoning Board. Allen's been serving, his term is up, but we're going to re-up him for a two-year term. This term will expire August of 2024. So I'm making that reappointment and making it public tonight. Item 6 is a recommendation to adopt Resolution 2022-9-19 that will adopt the Title VI program for the city of Hamilton to maintain compliance with the Civil Rights Act of 1964. As a recipient of the federal financial assistance from the Allen Department of Transportation for the 15-passenger van we use for inbound mail delivery at the Hamilton Senior Center, the Title VI program is mandatory. So we need to adopt this resolution to stay in compliance with the Civil Rights Act of 1964 where it comes to public transportation, even though the primary use of this van is the delivery of meals occasionally. We do transport people in it to certain special occasions. So we need to adopt the resolution.
I'll make a motion.
Scott Robertson made the motion, we need a second on that before vote. Matt made the second. All those in favor of that resolution? Thank you very much. Item 7 is a recommendation to adopt the city of Hamilton's social media policies. Previously, we have not had a social media policy in the city, even though we talked about one. We've asked Scott Hunt to design us one and I'm sure we've all had a chance to read it. I think it uncovers the areas that we think that it should. Scott, we appreciate you putting that together for us and I was real well pleased with the version. Is there any changes recommended before we adopt this social media policy? Do we have a motion then to adopt?
I'll make a motion.
Got a motion from Scott Robertson, we need a second.
I'll say it.
Scott, Tyra's second. All in favor of adopting a social media policy for the city? Thank you.
Is each employee to come? We can do that or we can send it out to the department at each facility, however y'all want to do it.
Whatever y'all think.
Okay.
How you do it for all of us?
We're not sure that all of our employees are aware of this and if any of them request a copy, we'll certainly furnish it to them. I think it should be a place that they could observe it or read it if they should need to or have any questions about it. Item 8 on our agenda tonight is a recommendation to annex the Marion County Lake property. And this is something that's been looked at for a while, but since already really in the scope of the city, but would like to officially bring it in under annexation tonight. And is there any questions on this, anything you want to ask from Scott or Scott Hunt before we vote?
I'd just like to say we did receive a petition for annexation from the Department of Conservation. There are 300 plus acres out there at the lake.
I'll make a motion.
We got a motion.
I'll say it.
All those in favor of the annexation of Marion County Lake property? We're definitely...
Appreciate Tracy, that control behind the scenes.
At this point, I'd like to give our representative, Mr. Tracy Estes, who's our guest tonight, an opportunity to approach us and give us a few words of wisdom and maybe discuss some...
Let me just pass the most important thing to talk about. I just want to thank the Mayor and Council for working so closely as a team with us. I think this is just a start and example of what governmental bodies can do when they work together as a team and don't care who gets credit. And so I would thank each and every one of you. Somebody else, the Mayor and the Scots, all made trips to Montgomery several months ago now and sold this idea to the Department of Conservation and Scott Hunt has continued his work with them since that time to bring this out. I'm very excited about what may be forthcoming. And by the Council taking this action tonight, Senator Goode and I can now step forward and reach out to the Governor's Office and see if you'll appropriate addition $2 million, as you know, give or take, to do the dam repairs at the lake that Conservation is recommending for us so they can do that since we're doing hopefully at least within as opposed to, we're talking about change of ownership. And so once they do that, we've already begun to work with Allen Department of Transportation to come in and a similar amount of money to come in and pave the entire loop around the entire lake. And so those are two big things that will help us and the city of Hamilton take care of not just our people in Hamilton. It still really is Marion County's lake and we've got some plans that all of y'all know to, if this all pans out like we hope, it's going to draw for more of the Marion County. And I really think we're working together as a team where one of these days we're going to be able to say, "You don't come through Hamilton, you don't act like you come to Hamilton, we've made Hamilton the destination between this." And another project we're working on alongside this property, and while the Council did a few weeks back in creating the first phase of the new track facility, the people in Hamilton should be very excited about what their leadership has done and continues to do, and I'm glad to be a very small part of that. So we're excited to see this, I'm glad to see it be official so that we can actually kind of officially top it up in our community. And Mayor, I appreciate your help and leading us with this and it's a pleasure.
I was trying to make the trip and I really was excited that we didn't get a negative from the Department of Conservation. I thought they were very cordial to us and somewhat receptive to the concept of what we wanted to do. I want to publicly thank you for the efforts you put forth to make this happen between us and them and you're a wonderful liaison in Montgomery for us and you're leading the charge.
It's my honor. We've done a lot, this body and I have, in the last four years of saving college, we've worked together to save an A&amp;I facility and worked to help our hospital. And now we have four years of working together. I think that's pretty big work. That doesn't count the smaller things, you're all aware of those things.
Those are big things for us.
This community, as you know, has become very important to me over the last three years. It's not just my time at this office I have to serve Hamilton and wait for somebody.
When we don't work together, communities tend to die.
Sure.
And our team work, our things play no.
Hamilton's right today, you're ahead of us, I promise you.
Just don't lay it up now.
Don't lay it up.
Keep the hammer.
We're just getting started, I promise you.
We said that, Mr. Silas. Encouragement's always good. Is there anything else that we would know?
One more.
Okay. This is for our Hamilton Police Department. This is the recommendation to accept a quote of $3,000 from consultant Ron Schiker to complete a revision of the Hamilton Police Department's policies and procedures. We met with him a few days ago and he has 38 years of experience in not only law enforcement, but also in the police academy training. He's an expert witness of federal and civil. He has the background to do this kind of thing and he is going to try to update our policies and procedures so as to adopt a new policy and procedure, planning for our police, but the cost will be $3,000 and I'd like to make this as a recommendation.
I'll make a motion.
Scott, Robertson made a motion if he accepts this proposal and then a second.
I'll say it.
Scott, Tyra's second. All those in favor of having our policy and procedures refreshed for the police department? Thank you, I appreciate it.
I think that I held the former police chief adopts one policy, one turn, and now the police chief does another policy. It's not really that the doctrine is official by the Mayor and Council, it's just something that they approve basically. It'd be, if it's settled, it'd not be something that the former chief did, that the former chief did that.
There's very much a need for this because we've been going to bits and pieces of different policies and procedures. Some of them were never adopted and they've tried to follow some of that stuff. It's just we need to have one guideline for them to follow and of course, on personnel, we still haven't said so on personnel, as far as that's concerned, but their policies and procedures definitely need to be updated.
Do you have any updates on Silas, on the Hamilton house?
Well, Mr. Ramble Silas, we could put out a broadcast to get a carpenter to volunteer to do the initial parts of passing squirrels out of the house and replacing the place or board on it right in front so we can get the bids around this. Mr. Ramble Silas was going to look at it, but after we put what we did on Facebook, Andrea called him off till we decided whether we want him to call her out. It was to come the next day, but when we posted that, she took, she called and told him not to come because he made a change of plan.
Can you type up, they got an address? I mean, we're waiting on her.
Yeah, I know, I know.
Patienture.
She's still... I understand, I understand. I think, I think that she'll be at our next meeting. That's my plan, is to have her at the next meeting.
I only want you to get up like that.
No, I drop out every day, so.
It looks as bad as it's looked these many years. I've looked at the plan specifically, but I can't tell you when we're going to move on the plan. The plan looks good, but I can't get to move forward. That's the problem. I believe we're going to have to go into session for survivors that have come over the last couple of days. I'm going to recommend that we have an executive session made for what...
And I apologize, Mary Wade and I were talking about the lake project. I may have missed it. Did y'all discuss the meeting with the University of Alabama on the feasibility study coming up next month? I didn't know if y'all mentioned that to confirm. We had set Wednesday the 5th at 10:00 here and I think you and I discussed, Scott and I discussed a couple of times, I think normally we'd call that a feasibility study, but considering that we've already taken the first step, I'm recalling it more of a return on investment study so we can show the people of Hamilton. The Council's step forward is to do this.
You're going to do that.
October 5th and September 10th.
We'll have a expert from the University of Alabama with you.
Lisa Miranda from University of Alabama Center for Economic Development. They're going to do us a study. It's going to tell us based on the investment the city's made.
Can you call a meeting where we can have more than just meetings there?
Oh yeah. I guarantee this is so. That's fine. Because like I said, we're not, you're not trying to hide anything, you're not putting together any last-minute deals. The commitment by the Council's already out, the public knows about it. All we're trying to do is get the experts, university gear to have this study.
I'm desperate to need them all to hear that.
Oh, they do, they do. We can have everybody here that day on the 5th at 10:00 and they're going to do a study for us. I'll get Scott credit for starting to push on this thing, but it's really a chance to show the people of Hamilton, okay, we're going to invest this much of... to show the people of Hamilton, okay, we're going to invest this much money on this really nice facility, but based on the University of Alabama study, they're projecting over the next decade or whatever time period they extrapolate they're over, they can determine how much money they think the city's going to see in return investment on that, our folks coming in from big meat and staying in our hotels, spending money on gasoline and groceries and things of that nature, fast food places. You know, if things go well enough and we start hosting enough events, we don't want to maybe another hotel or two. So I'm excited. Anytime you get the university's name behind it, that gives us some weight.
This man is going to have lots of questions up there, and I don't want them to miss it.
I agree.
I just wonder, make sure we didn't break any rules of the law about meetings.
Yes, well, as you know, we're all together as an open meeting. I did not know my first year about Montgomery Technical there, you know, we talked about us open meeting exceptions for, Scott knows more about this than I do, but land acquisition, good name in character, pending litigation, we all know those. I didn't know about that in Montgomery one day, and I was talking about getting a meeting together with Sunbrook and then making sure it was open to the public, and one of the attorneys in Montgomery said, "Representative, you do realize that our cases were representative or eccentric and calls for a meeting, and open meeting law does not apply if the lawmaker calls for it?" But I don't think this is one of those times. This is already something we've already discussed, open to the public, need to be fully aware of it, and I would think that other option needs to be used in very, very rare circumstances. That's the form of terms, let me see.
Thanks for bringing that to me. We all need to hear that.
So we got that one for you. Yeah, I've got those one today before.
Oh, different. Shout, shout, would, hey, I should go with that. When you go out and break the meeting and then the executive session, we have a motion, please.
For Lake of June. I'll make that motion. I'll second.
All those in favor?
You may, you may.
Okay. Scott now.
We're going to be here for Tom, if you will, just go sit down and come over and address this right now, and then we'll move to the executive session. We'll have to come back at this session.
We can see.
We're going to, we're going to do this.
...for our local community. From a small dent to major collision repair, Hamilton Paint and Body is here for you. Owners Brett and Kim Guehen would like to say thank you for your business.
Northwest Alabama Heating and Cooling, blowing away our competition.
Hello, I'm Richard Kitchens, owner of Sports Gallery here on the Court Square in Hamilton. Would like to thank all of our customers and thank you for watching the Hamilton City Council Meeting.
Hi, my name is Randy Whitehead, President and CEO of People's Trust Bank. I invite you to view the live streaming of Hamilton City Council meetings every first and third Monday at 6:00 PM.
Have your perfect stay at the Holiday Inn in Guehen off of I-22. Enjoy our amazing onsite restaurant and bar with a lunch buffet every Sunday. Relax with a quick getaway with your family and make a splash in our outdoor pool. Book your next event with us. Call us at (205) 468-4625.
I'm Rick Chambers with Marion County Funeral Home and Scribe Memorial Chapel in Russell, Alabama. This is Dwayne Cochran, our manager out here. Under the laws of Alabama that was passed in 2002, a funeral establishment has to be certified with the state and carry a certificate of authority before they can even talk to anyone when the time comes, is guaranteed to be there.
Since 1987, Smith Furniture has been in business to serve the community with high-quality furniture at the best price. Some of our name brands are Homestretch, Ashley, Lazy Boy, Catnapper, Lane, Barbasset, GE, Frigidaire, Whirlpool, and Maytag. We offer finance in 12 months, same as cash. So stop by Fulton, Mississippi and see Jim, Shannon, and Joe at Smith's Furniture, or call us at (662) 862-7412.
Hello, everyone. My name is Ryan Knott, and I am a board member of the Hamilton Area Chamber of Commerce. I want to invite everyone to come out and join us for the annual Budahatchie River Fall Festival on Saturday, October 29th, from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM. We'll start off the morning with the Kiwanis 5K race, then go directly downtown for a fun field and action-packed day. We plan to have a car show, tractor show, motorcycle ride, benefiting the nonprofit Hooper Paul, and a lineup of great entertainment from all over the area that the whole family is sure to enjoy. Be sure to join us the last Saturday in October for our annual Budahatchie River Fall Festival right here in downtown Hamilton, Alabama. If you're interested in being a vendor, please call the office at (205) 921-7786.